Welcome to our City Commission Study Session. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the study session. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. Today, we have three topics that we are going to discuss. And the first one is the Proposed Public Art Project.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'd like to invite up Arenne Yun, she'll come up, and Steve Grant, if you want to come up too and just sit up here.
Down there?
Yes, please. A couple of months ago in October, Arenne met with Steve Grant and I about a proposed public art project. And so, I provided the commission and the public a little bit of information. And I thought we would bring Ms. Yun here tonight to let her talk about her project and maybe, if the commission had any questions and see if there's a consensus to move forward or see what we need to do. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Yun.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Arenne Yun. I'm an artist and arts educator. So, I just recently received a grant from a national nonprofit arts organization called United Photo Industries to do a project about the military family experience with military families. So, the project will be threefold. First, I will offer free workshops to military spouses and military children, high school-aged, documentary photography workshops, where they learn techniques and about the history of photography, basically like almost like a college-level course. And the second element is, with your approval, will be a public art installation. So, what I envision is when you walk into Leavenworth Landing, there's the fence that protects against the train tracks. So, I'll install panels of each participant that participates in these workshops, and it'll be like a portrait of them and the works that they produced in the workshops. So, I'm thinking about maybe thirty participants at this time. So, then you walk in and you see, you know, this kind of like documentary photography project. And then, on the other side of the path along the Missouri River, I'm gonna install, it'll be the service member that corresponds with that family. And they'll be in combat uniform, and it'll be life-size. So, and they'll be spaced out like a few feet apart, so it looks like they're protecting our borders. So, then it's this metaphor of, you know, what our servicemen do for our country, and then also the sacrifices of the military families serving our country. So, hopefully, the audience will feel not only like the physical distance with deployments and constant family separations, but also like the psychological and emotional and kind of get like a deeper glimpse into the military family experience, like as shown by themselves and not through like an outside media organization. And hopefully, you know, this will help bridge like the civil-military divide a little bit. And, you know, in a time where there's constant, like, just bipartisanship, hopefully, this will bring, you know, the community together. I know Leavenworth is very unique because it has a civilian community and a military community that supports each other. So, I think this will be a great opportunity to do that. And the third part will be a website that promotes the project, and it'll include an interactive element, so service members or military family members can kind of participate with the project from all over the world. And then, also, United Photo Industries is very well-connected with other arts organizations and media organizations, so they will also promote it. They've already mentioned that The Guardian newspaper would like to do an article about it, so I think it'll definitely promote tourism. And, you know, I just think that the best way to support a military, especially like in these times, is to support the families. And the best way to support the families is to kind of hear their stories from their perspective and give them kind of like a therapeutic outlet to express themselves.
When do you plan to do this?
So, I'm trying to get the ball rolling. There's a lot of red tape in the military, so I'm just trying to get everyone on board with this project, and of course, with your approval as well with the art installation. And then, I plan on meeting with Colonel Hung and discussing it with him as well. I, one, well, I wasn't sure where I was gonna hold the workshops. I thought maybe like the high school, I could do it as an after-school program. I reached out to the principal there, and I'm just waiting back kind of to hear from different, you know, people.
So, what time of year would you be looking at?
So, one more thing I wanted to add was, after the project concludes, it'll be, certain parts of the exhibition will be part of a big exhibition in New York, a big photo exhibition that they hold every year, and then part of a traveling exhibition all across the country with other artists. So, I was thinking, envisioning in the fall. Steve, Paul and I talked about maybe around Veterans Day or maybe, I don't know, in conjunction with Camp Leavenworth, which was like a great, you know, event from last year.
That sounds good, long as it's not in April or when it's flooding.
Right, yeah, no, in the fall, yeah, because we have to complete the workshops, and then, and also, I'll be working with Young Sign Company, a local business, to produce the artwork.
And how long would it be displayed?
Um, I mean, ideally, I thought, oh, nine months would be awesome, because then people can experience like what a deployment feels like in time, but then I don't think the weather will allow that.
Well, right. I was gonna ask, the material that's gonna be used is...
It's like banner, yeah. Weatherproof vinyl, like, it's like banner material, yeah, and we'll zip tie it to the fence.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when you say life-size, I mean, is that like, like, six-foot person or...
Yeah, I wanted to have like that realistic feeling, like sculptural feeling. And I know that the fence along the river is shorter, so we would kind of, kind of build something that would make it like, you know, secure.
And is it all, are they just all individual banners or is it all like...
No, individual, yeah. So, it would be one long banner, just one each, so one panel and then zip-tied to the fence, and then on that side, one panel, one panel.
So, if we did, if we did have a problem down there, we could move it, you could move it, right?
Yes, we could move it, and you know, just to make sure a public art, public art is, if it gets damaged, that's part of it too, you know, so I won't be...
Part of the experience.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Are the workshops, training workshops, are we supporting those in any way? The city, do we have any part of that, or we're just granting the fence space?
Um, no, the workshop, everything is funded by the grant, so I won't be asking the city for any money.
How long will the workshops be?
Um, they'll be about, like, maybe an hour and a half to two hours, and then maybe twice a month, so maybe a total of eight to ten workshops per group. So, like, I'm gonna have a separate spouse group and a separate military children group.
Okay, three, yeah, you said three different ones, okay. With a total of, you said eight to ten sessions?
Yes, per group, two groups.
Two, oh, two groups, okay.
Yeah, like high school students and spouses.
Oh, okay.
We've talked about tying this in with some CBB stuff. We've also talked about a kickoff event, a nice kickoff event that the city, I think, would be involved in. We have talked, getting into the details, we've talked about how repairs happen, when they happen, how the materials, and we'll get more into those details as we go along.
I think it sounds great.
Thank you.
Mr. Grant, anything that you want to add or...
No, it just, it sounds like a great project. We talked a lot, as Paul just said, about the materials being used and how they would be maintained throughout the project, and they wouldn't have any negative effects on the fence or anything like that, protecting our resources. And then, of course, as Commissioner Batter alluded to, there's always the worry of flooding and being able to remove it. Unfortunately, we're getting pretty good at removing things.
Yeah.
But, yes.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? So, then, what we're, and thank you, Ms. Yun, for your presentation. It sounds like a very ambitious and a very important project.
Thank you.
But, we need to give, see if we have a consensus to give staff approval to work with Ms. Yun to work on a temporary public art installation on city property.
Do we need consensus or do we need a motion?
We can't vote on it anyway.
Just, as long as there's...
Can we do with it?
Yes, yes.
Yep, okay.
And Ms. Grant, I'd like to say, I want to, the Stevie Park sign looks very nice.
I want to compliment you on that.
Thank you.
And Ms. McDonald and everyone that helped install it, I know it wasn't just a, you know, a particular department, but it looks good.
Thank you. Hope to have it up and running by the end of the week, or just doing the final programming and stuff like that.
I think it's a sign I... I appreciate you thinking of doing this in our community. I think it's gonna be great.
Yeah, I think it's an important, you know, project.
Absolutely. And I do comment, I did look at your website and everything, and yes, and you are very talented.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, is the next step, like, there's a voting on it or...
So, what you'll do is, you'll work with Steve and I, and we'll, we'll work on the details, and then we'll brief the commission and probably do another presentation in the spring or the summer as we move closer to, to an actual project.
Sounds great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
The next topic is updated review of a proposed adoption of the 2018 Fire Code.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, an ongoing City Commission goal over the last year and a half is to update our codes across the board, everything from fire code to building codes to property maintenance codes. At a study session at the end of 2019, we went briefly over all of those codes and the code changes. We know there was a lot of material thrown at you and thrown at the public that night. Fire code and building code being two items that we thought, we'll just bring back again as a refresher, kind of some of the changes. As a reminder, this is a change to the 2018 International Building Code. This is not some obscure sets of codes that we're adopting. This is codes that the rest of the country uses and most of our neighbors are using currently. So, the first presentation tonight is just again, a review of changes to the 2018 Fire Code and some of the key issues in that. With that, I'll turn it over to our Fire Marshal Andy Brooks and our Fire Chief Gary Birch.
As far as the, welcome.
Updating review, thank you, thank you for helping us, Commissioner Mayor. As far as that goes, any questions that have been proposed to the commission concerning current?
Can you just go and kind of review the highlights from what we had discussed about a month and a half ago, I think?
December 3rd.
Well, the issue is consider adopting the 2018 International Fire Code from the current 2006 IFC through the code ordinances, and our recommendation is to adopt the 2018 Fire Code through ordinance to include, including everything excluding Chapter 11, which was titled Construction Requirements for Existing Buildings. There's a couple of sections in there that we were gonna not omit. Section 1103.8, Single and Multiple Station Smoke Alarms, and section 1103.9, Carbon Monoxide Alarms, we're gonna keep those in the existing building code portion of the Fire Code. And what those are, are, you know, basically any multi-family residents, apartment homes, anything like that, that are currently operating or being built, or not being built, but currently operating, put in smoke alarms in the buildings and carbon monoxide alarms. So, the carbon monoxide is, is new for them. But, right now, we, under the 2006, we do have smoke alarms, requirements for, for multi-family existing buildings, yes. So, it's still, I mean, it's in the 2006, so it's just, we're recycling it, and we're not omitting that one, we're just keeping it, if that makes sense.
So, on, on existing structures, whether they be single-family residences or multi-family residences, going forward under this 2018 Fire Code, for, is it for existing structures?
Existing, but not single-family.
Not single-family.
Yeah, it's not, it's not single-family, like anything that's multi-family, like apartments or, you know, larger than a duplex, basically.
And that's what we've had since 2006?
Yes.
And that smoke alarm, and then you said the carbon monoxide?
Smoke alarms is 2006, carbon monoxide is the new portion, yes.
So, so existing multi-family residence and structures within the city, if they don't have the carbon monoxide detectors, they would have to install those going forward?
Provided by, provided by the landlord or however.
If they have some gas fired, if they have gas, like a bonus...
Like a furnace or water heater.
Snow, fireplace, something like that, if it's all electric, then it wouldn't be required.
That's right, correct.
And they'd have to be in each apartment, so they couldn't be like in the hallways of the building or whatever, they'd have to be in each apartment, correct?
Yes.
Do we have, do we have any idea of the scope of that within the, within the, within the city? It's hard, I mean, that's, I guess, something that would be hard to get our hands around, but, but...
Well, I guess when you do inspection, inspections, you'd see that, right?
We don't inspect them, living, there are people there, they're less than...
Oh, and the apartments complex, oh, okay.
Right.
Be more of a public awareness campaign, that's an emphasis, and also now a requirement under city code. How you check that is, you know, it's not really a practical matter, but knowing, letting people know that it is part of the code and that it is an expectation and it's a life safety issue.
Anything else? Because, how about the situation with burning, that as far as burning within the city limits, that was a big point of discussion when we, when we talked about this in early December. So, can you just review what, what these 2018 regulations say about that?
Currently, the code allows permitted open burning and non-permitted burning in barrels. Permits are issued for the burning of tree branches and brush piles with the wind and distant stipulations. Our recommendation is no burning in the city limits of Leavenworth, with the exception of open pit air curtain destructors, that would be permit required, that's for construction.
What is an open pit air?
Sure. Same thing.
Those are for large land clearing, construction companies come in and put, you know, a large building or business that they're building, and they come in and clear a bunch of trees, they dig a big pit, it's normally like a size of this table here, this open pit, and it's a big gas-driven fan that blows into the hole, and it just keeps the air flowing and the burn, burning clean, basically.
Okay.
That's an air curtain destructor.
Okay.
It just burns the wood fast, so they don't have to transport it off-site.
Chief, I, I think I mentioned to you, I had a couple of citizens come to me asking for an exception on the burned barrels. People have like a 55-gallon barrel, and I told each one of them to come and talk with you, and I said that you're a very reasonable man, and you could, they could talk it out. I don't know if anyone did talk with you or not, and I know that there's some citizens here tonight that are, according to the letter we had, asking the same thing. Did you, did you get any pushback from any people on the...
We did receive a letter, it was 40, and we got a phone call, and I wasn't able to go the other day, but I had Andy go visit with the residents.
But, still, your position that no 55-gallon barrel burns or, you know...
That would be my recommendation, like I said, and I kind of base that on, you know, whatever, a lot of people do what they're supposed to do, but we have other people that throw cardboard and other stuff, you know, papers, leaves, and also, you know, based on that, we, we had, like I mentioned, we've had three fires, two with barrels and one with a stump in the last two years, we had two in 2019 that was caused from barrels. You know, it wasn't, maybe, they wasn't, they left a burning that didn't attend it or didn't have a screen on it, so those things do occur.
So, if they want to burn, they have to, right now, go see Carla to get a permit before they, or to see you all?
They come to us.
They come to you, then how difficult is it to get a permit to, you know, they have to, you have to come in and check on them or what?
Right now, they, they call, we go out, we look to see where they're gonna burn, make sure it's got the proper distance from the property, and then the size of the, the size of the burn. And then, they're supposed to have some kind of extinguishing agent, garden hose, water or something like that near it.
Okay.
So, that's kind of the process, and the wind, if it's, you know, wind blow 10 miles per hour...
Then you won't allow it, sure.
Yeah, if it's more, yeah, we'll allow it if it's less than 10 miles per hour.
But, with a 55-gallon barrel burn, there was no requirement to get the permit? You could just burn?
Correct.
You could just burn?
There was no, correct.
Now, with this, can you still burn the 55-gallon barrel if you get a permit or is it, or what?
We're recommending no.
Okay.
The only recommendation is that we were, exceptions, were the open pit destructors, and that's more of a commercial thing.
That's a big thing.
That's a big thing, and that was already, that's already in our ordinance that we had. The second thing that we, we listed as permit is a ceremonial-type bonfires, which we stipulated 50 feet from a structure, six-foot diameter and no more than four-foot high, so not a real large bonfire. Sometimes colleges, schools will do some type of ceremonial type of burn. And that's something, we would go out and inspect and look at that.
But, a burned barrel is not really much bigger than a campfire or an outdoor fireplace?
No, so if a person wanted to burn to witness death, they could do it in a campfire without a permit.
Why can't they do it in a barrel instead of a campfire? I mean, what's the difference?
Sometimes, burned barrels are looked at as, you can kind of just light them and leave them, and that's where a lot of times we...
That's where the trouble gets in.
Exactly, because they're just, you know, they're not watched, and then, we can't come in, when we do our permits, we come in and you have to meet all these stipulations, you have to have an extinguishing agent or water nearby, it has to be so many feet. Technically, right now, in our burned barrel allowance, we don't even have to come, we don't even come by and look at anything, how, I would say, says it right now, other than what they read.
Can I, can I hear from the person that wrote this letter?
Yes, Mr...
Mr. or Mrs. Gillette?
Yeah, would you like to come up and, come on, come on up and please state your name and address, and the commission would like to hear your input.
They've got a large, a large property over there.
I'm Julie Gillette, 517 South 21st Street, and I've been there for 44 years, and I've had bonfires for 40 years, burning tree limbs and bush trimmings. Now, with this new burn in the city, no burn in the city, my burning will be classified as a ceremonial bonfire.
Permit required.
But, that permit required, basically, if he's getting ready to burn something, can he call you and get permission to burn it? Is that, that's what I'm asking.
That's how the permit works, they call now, and we go up there and look at the property.
No, no, I, I don't think you asked the question right. I mean, he's gotta say it's ceremonial bonfire. Ceremonial bonfire, say, this is the, you know, this is my college, this is the school function, we're doing it, him doing it more, you know, trying to skirt it, according to this, probably is not going to work. I don't think that's the spirit intent of a ceremonial bonfire, you can't just say...
Right, yeah, right. Go ahead, Mr....
Well, for this ceremonial bonfire, in the paper I have from the fire people, it does not mention a permit will be needed, but on the internet, it says a permit will be needed. So, which way is it gonna be, Fire Chief?
This hasn't been asked yet?
What was the question?
No, no, well, in terms, first of all, I think what you're talking about is not a ceremonial bonfire, right? I mean, that was Commissioner Preisinger's point, and we will discuss that, but, I mean, it is based on what we have in front of us in terms of the staff policy paper, is that ceremonial bonfires, a permit would be required, would be required, for ceremonial...
For a ceremonial?
Yes, sir. That's what we have in front of us in terms of the staff policy paper.
It shows that it will be, has to have a permit.
Yes, I mean, in terms of what is in front of us right now, in terms of the recommendation from the Fire Chief, yes, that is correct, sir.
Okay. Now, let me talk about the ending of the burned barrels.
Sure.
I've had one for 40 years. I'm asking for an exception. I think that places that have one acre or more and their lot that they live on should have, be able to have a burned barrel, if it's one acre or more. Now, I'm on 2.78 acres where I am, and I would like to have the City Commission to ask the City Manager to have the Fire Chief do this, exception, put it into the things that you're gonna deal with on this.
So, you're asking for an exception to what the current policy recommendation is from the Fire Chief on the, on the burned barrels?
Yeah, he wants to get rid of burned barrels, no matter what.
Right, right.
He thinks that nobody should have one.
Sure.
And I don't agree with that.
Right, I got it, understand it. Okay, any, anything else, sir?
No, not right now.
Can I ask you a question? How often do you burn?
I, in the burned barrel, I burn maybe once every couple of months.
Okay.
On the bonfire, I burn once or twice a year, depends on how much rain we get, on how, how many limbs are gonna go off of the trees, and how well the bushes are gonna grow and have to be trimmed back. And so, I typically have anywhere from two feet high to four feet high, and typically five-foot by five-foot pile of limbs and the stuff that I burn.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Gillette?
Nope.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something, it's awfully hard to say.
Come on up, ma'am.
You need to come up and give us your name.
Tell us your name.
I'm the, I'm the better half. The Fire Marshal was kind enough to come out to our house yesterday, and he didn't hear the definition of a ceremonial fire.
Sure.
And we also have been known to have a weenie roast for the neighborhood kids or a marshmallow roast, and the Fire Marshal said that the small pile that we asked him to look at this last week would fit the bill for being able to get a permit under the exceptions that we had. So, the burned barrel was the main thing we were wanting to see about. Thank you.
As I understand it, Mr. Mayor, recreational and campfires are not permit required. No one said you had to have a permit?
No.
No, I mean, if you, you are gonna have a little weenie roast or marshmallows, you don't have to go out and get a permit.
Right.
Or if you have a, now he's calling, a chimenea.
Well, I think...
Oh, he's calling chimineas.
Yeah, it's an exception.
You don't need, need one there or an outdoor fire pit. So, you know, some of these things are, you know, it's not required for that, so I want to make sure that information is correct. And, once again, this is the 2018 International Fire Code that the chief's bringing to us, it's our decision, it's not the chief's decision.
Sure, he's making recommendations. What do you think about the, Mr. Gillette's recommendation that an exception be granted for burned barrels in lots larger than one acre? What's your position on that, Chief?
Well, I don't wanna mention his name, but the gentleman lives out on Eisenhower, has probably 15 or 20 acres, and he burned his barn down last year. He walked away from his barrel. I don't, it lit on it, but it, wind blew and it caught his barn on fire. So, it does happen. You know, some, some people may be very cautious and pay attention, there's others that don't, and there's people that burn paper in it and other items, which shouldn't, of course, anything that's burning, if they, if it starts smoking, then we're gonna put it out because it's someone causing complaints for nuisance, some of that nature. Some people use barrels to burn off the insulation off copper wire and things of that nature, which is smoky, but, I mean, it gets used for other things. Some people do it correctly and stuff, but you have a lot of people around town that do other things. And, and one of my, and it wasn't just me personally, but staff discussing it, with us being able to cut branches up and the, and the refuge takes it, and then also, we have the landfill that's open for breed of residents Tuesdays and Fridays, a lot of cities don't have that luxury. So, it, you know, it is a way of getting rid of the tree branches and things of that. So, that's, that was our thinking on it.
So, basically, what you're saying is they can call, call for permission if they have a, one of the bonfires?
If it's ceremonial bonfire, not a private, not a private burn.
Whatever.
No, there's a, there's a complete difference, isn't there?
Anyway, let me finish, please. But, but as far as the barrels goes, they're completely not permitted at all. Barrels are not at all.
That's what is, the staff recommendation is at this point, and Mr. Gillette is asking us to...
I kind of don't agree with that, because I think, I think that, I think that, that if they got, if they got permission every time they burned in a barrel, it would be the same thing as having bonfire, you know? If you call for permission, you call for a permit to get, I don't see why they can't call for a permit to get, to burn in a barrel.
What's a prescribed burn?
Prescribed burn is square a lot of times, sometimes like for large retention areas.
Oh, okay.
The breeze gets up, or some people may have prairie grass.
I got you, yeah.
And so, they wanna burn that off certain times of the year.
Okay.
That would be a prescribed burn.
What's the extent of, I mean, just in a general sense, within the city? I mean, is it, are there a fair amount of citizens that, that use the burned barrels currently to, I mean, just, is it just a few, I mean, or it's hard, it's hard to...
I have no way of knowing that. I didn't know Mr. Preisinger used a burn code.
Quite a few around the city, I think, I believe there are.
But, I mean, the exception is interesting from the standpoint of, one of the things in terms of lots of one acre or larger, I mean, that aspect of it is...
I don't see where that makes any difference, the acreage part. I don't think it should make any difference. One acre may be full of trees, one acre maybe have a lot of room, you know, I don't, I don't get that part.
Well, I, I get it from the standpoint of, if it's a smaller lot, it's likely to be like in a subdivision or something like that, and I would be... to be like in a subdivision or something like that, and I would be, I, I think it is different having some land with respect to doing that versus in maybe smaller lots.
I mean, if you can have land or not, I mean, it would be just the person's responsibility to watch.
Right.
You know, and stand there and watch the fire in the barrel.
Right.
And otherwise, if they don't, it's, you know, it, things happen and, you know, barn burns down.
Chief, is there a distinction that you would make between, I mean, what Mr. Gillette is asking for as an exception, like on one acre, on lots one acre or larger, versus, you know, smaller amount of acreage or, or lots, is there, from a safety standpoint, or?
Well, uh, you know, we, still, we'd still want a certain distance from a structure.
Okay.
I don't see where the acreage is, is a, an issue.
I would, I would think the acreage is an issue. If you're, uh, if you're in a subdivision and there are six houses per acre, each one is, you know, eight thousand square feet, or really, uh, seven thousand square feet, and you have a burn barrel out there?
Well, no, I don't agree with that either, but.
And then the smoke, the smoke will go into someone, it's just the nuisance value, uh, portion, not, and the danger is much greater, too. You know, I, I obviously have used a burn barrel, told the chief that, but I, I do see the wisdom in not having it. I mean, we, this city does offer a lot of ways to get rid of brush and things, uh, is that I think most other cities don't. We, you put it out in the trash to cut up, you know, you can use the trash, uh, the, uh, dump on Second Street, one Saturday a month, it's free, and quite often, after many storms, it's, uh, it's free more than one Saturday a month, or maybe even for a full week. If it is implemented, I know I'll miss it, but I can also see the wisdom in not having it.
I mean, uh, by having an acreage on it, just sitting there, just kinda thinking out loud, that's gonna limit the number of people that can do it, because there's actually a barrel within walking distance to the north. We've already went and put some stuff out, now they have a barrel, and the other day I went by, it was burning and nobody around. We've been up there a couple of times, so it would limit the number of people that would be using a barrel for, if you put the acreage on it, so.
I, I would just like to see in the exceptions whatever size barrels with permit.
The commission can certainly do what they would, would like. I would advise against, um, changing an acre, not an acre.
No.
I think you either sort of philosophically decide whether you want burn barrels or not, and, um, make that decision. Again, there's, there's somebody on a half an acre who's extremely responsible, and somebody on one acre who leaves it unattended and it burns. So I think it's more of a, in my opinion, more of a philosophical discussion on whether you want burn barrels or not. The chief has given you his, uh, recommendation, but it is certainly up to the commission what you'd like to do.
And is that a, is that a decision that we need to make? Is there anything else to analyze, or would, would you be?
No, I don't believe there's, there's much else. It's a, it's a community by community, what you think's best for the community decision. We got some feedback. I, I don't know that we get a lot more, but we could certainly wait to get more, um, but it's really up to the commission to decide what they want them to do. Unless there's any more data you'd like the chief to, to pull, but I don't know what that would be at this time.
And one thing you have to consider on burn barrels, and, I mean, I know that Dr. Gillette is not a violator of this, I'm pretty sure he's not, and, you know, when I would burn, brush my backyard, if you had burn barrels, you know, that's back fifty years ago when I was in this town, you burned your trash. Everyone had a burn barrel, and you burned it in your backyard. And as, we have a refuse service, an outstanding one. I'd say the best one in the Kansas City area. If we allow burn barrels, uh, I think you're gonna get people that are gonna, they're not gonna be burning just brush, they're gonna be burning furniture with plastics and foams and different other things. I mean, yep, you say a, a burn barrel, and we think this can be twigs and two-inch, uh, limbs, but in reality, it's not. It's gonna be, as you said, newspaper, and it's gonna be, people are not gonna have a screen on top, and, and, uh, you know, saddling the fire department for everyone that wants to get a permit for a burn barrel, you know, and we have twenty calls on a particular Saturday morning to go do that. I mean, there's a, a big administrative burden to that, too. While ceremonial bonfires, it wouldn't be, like, see, you know, the high school could do one, St. Mary's could do one, or something like that, they're not gonna be twenty of them on a weekend. And these other ones are all permit required, the prescribed burns, you know, those are the exceptions. But if you have to get a permit for a burn barrel, you guys could be, I don't wanna say getting run ragged, but you get a lot of, lot of calls that you're being going a lot of times to inspect things.
What do we know about surrounding communities? Anything in terms of this aspect of the, you know, the burn barrel? Do we know anything about the surrounding communities?
They all vary a little bit. Some have no burning, uh, at all, except for the chimneys in a campfire, size variation. A lot of the stuff that we pull, like prescribed burn and stuff, we actually pulled that from Shawnee and some other communities out there. But we kinda looked and seen what they had, other communities.
Commissioner Wilson, anything?
Well, my thoughts are, just say if they did, uh, get a permit for a burn barrel, and, you know, they leave it unattended, they decide to, uh, burn plastic, and, I mean, how are you gonna be able to monitor that?
We wouldn't, unless we've gotten called out there.
Yeah, so that's, so I'm kinda.
You wouldn't know, yeah.
Yeah, I, okay.
Yeah, so I'm kinda.
I got your input on that.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leonhard?
No, I mean, I feel the same way, yeah.
Yeah.
You're not gonna know what they're burning. And what they're burning can be even more hazardous.
One more time, Mr. Gillette, come on up to, uh, I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you a minute, sir, and then, uh.
It won't take that long.
Okay.
I keep hearing this talk about a permit for a burn barrel. We've never had to get a permit for burn barrels. Now, why are we even talking about getting a permit to burn in a burn, in a barrel?
The other option, sir, is that we're saying, we're eliminating burn barrels. That, right now, the, what's up before us is saying, no burn barrels.
Right.
Yeah, well, you, you've got the opportunity to change that. You don't have to do everything that he wants.
Well, this is what, this is what I think, and I know, um, we, I think I'd just like a little bit more analysis and just a little time to think about it. I mean, I, we all, we've all expressed our, um, where we, where we stand on right now, but I think just doing a little bit more analysis with some of the questions we asked, and just bringing that part just back to the commission would be what I would be comfortable with.
Okay.
On the burn barrel aspect of this. Just, just to, just to step back and be a little bit more deliberative about our, if you would do that, I would appreciate it. And I don't think there are any other, uh, issues or concerns that seems to be, you know, focused on the burn barrels.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I, what I'd like to know is, surrounding communities, say in Loveworth County and maybe Johnson County, on the burn barrel issue, I think that's the only issue that may be in, in, in flux here.
Loveworth County, everybody has.
Yeah, no, I'm talking cities. I'm talking cities. Cities, yeah.
Windup County's right next to it.
Okay.
Within incorporated cities.
Does that, do we do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, is there anything else we need to go over as far as the two thousand and eighteen fire?
I think it looks good.
All right. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna study this, and, uh, Ms. Gillette and Mr. Gillette, so thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, uh, agenda item is updated review of proposed adoption of various building-related codes.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, on that same evening that we discussed all the other two thousand and eighteen codes, we got into building code changes. That was more numerous. So again, uh, tonight is, uh, second chance for the public to hear about some of the changes of the code, and for our chief building inspector, our public works director, to go over just, uh, one more time and hear your questions about what, what they have in the code. Mike?
All right, now, thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I'll kind of step through the policy report. We tried to add a little more detail on how the items that we brought to the commission at the last meeting. But we do enforce a variety of building codes, uh, that are, uh, basically fairly normal. They just happen to be, uh, much older than the state of the, uh, industry and the surrounding communities that we work in. Most of our building codes are dated, in fact, all of them, I believe, are dated back to two thousand and six, and we're proposing to bring, uh, them up to the two thousand seventeen or two thousand and eighteen additions. Building codes is a generic term for, uh, documents that, uh, control how things are built. We realize that there is kind of a, I guess, a contextual error in some of the leading on the front page, but it doesn't change any of the substantive things. But there are building codes that, uh, the first one is, uh, referred to as the International Building Code, and that is, uh, for the construction of, uh, new commercial and new industrial buildings. So if you say building code, we're referring to all of them. If you say international building code, uh, somebody, an architect, may be referring to specifically the office building that they're designing. Uh, the, the second one is the two thousand and eighteen residential code, and we realize that we left off the word, uh, existing, but it is a compilation of codes that really relate to residential, uh, buildings, both, uh, new construction and to work on existing structures. And the word existing was left off of your policy report. I apologize for that. But it has within the bounds of what you would say the building code, uh, all of the typical things that you see in residential construction into one, uh, one code book. The, uh, in, what we call the International Existing Building Code, uh, you would, uh, assume it's for existing buildings, and it is, but we've had it labeled as residential structures. It's actually commercial structures, and at that point, uh, I'm really double sorry for that. But it is, uh, it is specifically related to remodeling of existing commercial, industrial structures, then the rest of it just gets easier as we go. Uh, there's a variety of building codes that are, that pertain essentially to everything. Fuel gas code, which is boilers and furnaces, mechanical code, which is heating, cooling, ventilation systems, plumbing code, water and sewer lines, uh, there is a swimming, swimming pool and spa code that applies to in-ground and above-ground pools that are over twenty-four inches deep. And the electrical code, which is kind of a different group of folk, that's why they're all, that's a two thousand and seventeen code and not a two thousand and eighteen code. So that is the group of building codes, uh, that we're proposing would be adopted by the city. I can assure you that nobody in our office is an expert on all of them, but we have spent a lot of time, um, our inspectors have experience in the, in the building trades, and they have a lot of experience working with, uh, new and existing structures. And our goal is to, uh, find the right way to build things that create safe buildings, both for current occupants and future occupants. So as we went through the review of the proposed new codes, I asked Cal to identify some things that we thought were probably worth visiting with the commission about, the type of things that get changed as, as these codes evolve over time. And, uh, the building code, uh, which is, uh, new, commercial, new industrial, I try to remember to point that as we go, uh, it is, uh, there's always changes that come into there, but some big ones are, we're increasing the wind speed, uh, from ninety miles an hour to a hundred and fifteen. There are some requirements for storm shelters, for educational and emergency critical response places, uh, and then a lot of kind of systems changes and how alarms are reported and that sort of thing. Uh, the architects for the buildings that we see today, uh, are basically using this code. And we basically say upfront, uh, they ask what code you're on, we say two thousand and six, and they look at us funny, and we say, well, if you're using, uh, tell us what code you're using, and if everything in that code, uh, is gonna be used on your project, we can make that adjustment. So we have generally allowed current projects to go with the most current code, without really any issues. Uh, the residential code, uh, is the one that addresses, uh, both new residential structures and existing residential structures. That is, uh, the one that has all the kind of moving parts in one book. Uh, it is, uh, single and two-family dwellings, essentially duplexes and townhomes, electrical, fuel, gas, mechanical, plumbing, and such. So we identified some key things, and I know one that, that got some further discussion at the meeting and, uh, after the meeting last time, what had to do with fire sprinkler systems. Uh, the state of Kansas has adopted legislation that prohibits cities from requiring fire sprinkler systems in, uh, one and two-family dwelling units. Uh, the current building code, or the proposed new building code, does require them, uh, but we can't, uh, we, we can't require them by state law. However, we're recommending that that section be left in there, because there are people that will choose to, uh, construct those, and it has some nice code things that, uh, so rather than strike that section out, uh, we will follow state law, not require it, but if someone chooses to build it, we'd like the opportunity to have a building code to follow, to inspect it. But we are not going to require that in single-family and, uh, one and two-family units. And it's required sprinkler systems on new construction are essentially required, everything larger than that, is it?
Well, depending on that, depending on the type of use of a building. Not every commercial building requires a sprinkler.
But residential, residential.
Oh, if you're talking anything with residential occupancy in a multi-use building, yes, more than likely, by the new building, by the International Building Code, yes, it will be sprinkled.
For, for new construction?
Yes. And, might be jumping ahead a little bit, but under the existing building code that covers commercial properties, if there's residential in it, more than likely, that's gonna require that as well. But there are options in the existing building code of different ways of designing, but, again, I just wanna stress, if residential's involved, more than likely, you will end up with a sprinkler system.
More than three, more than two, yes.
But back to single-family and duplexes, we had no intentions ever for requiring sprinklers in those. Whether it's brand-new or whether it's renovation, it is not staff's intent to say you have to put a sprinkler system in.
I mean, that would be in violation of the state law, as you, as you outlined, right?
Yeah.
The, uh, fire department talked briefly about carbon monoxide detectors being required in, uh, new construction and some renovations, uh, and that's, uh, that's where these codes nicely interlink with each other. That section, uh, I think it refers to this code, and, uh, so we, we support that in our building code, is bringing up the, uh, uh, safety of the inside of the residential buildings. And this only applies, of course, to those that have, uh, something that's burning, something, water heaters or a furnace, or, uh, something of that nature. Another one that has gained a lot of attention in the last few years is a requirement for ice barriers on a new roof. Uh, this is, uh, something that, you know, I've wondered about over the years, and I finally asked questions about it last year or the year before, so I understood it. But basically, it keeps ice from building up on the eaves of your houses, icicle, and getting the ice into underneath the shingles and pulling nails or into the wood and causing deterioration around the nails and that sort of thing. Uh, it's, and it happens at the low ends of the roof, where you're changing from a heated area that's under the roof to the eve, where typically there's, say, zero-degree air outside, and then there's seventy, eighty-degree air in the, in the attic. It will keep that water from penetrating further into the roofing system.
That's what I add, it really doesn't stop the ice from forming, it just stops it from doing more damage.
I'm trying to picture what that, what they look like.
I know, yeah.
It's, it's a white, typically, it's a white or a blue sheet that's wrapped around the low edge of a roof all the way around. Some builders will cover the entire roof with that, but typically, it's about the bottom, what, three to five feet of.
Yeah, it depends on the overhang size, but it's, it's just a much thicker, much more durable product than the, uh, than, uh, as most people call roofing felt.
Got it, okay.
So that's in residential.
It takes the place of that at the bottom.
Underneath.
Yeah, you won't see it.
Okay, got it, got it. Now I understand.
It gets covered up with the shingles.
A little slow, but I understand that.
And then we, we found a couple of other things that, uh, we still, even a month and a half later, believe, uh, probably have some, uh, some place in Loveworth, but we're not ready to make a recommendation at this point. Uh, one is storm shelter requirements for residential occupancies. That is not a requirement, is part of the new building code. Some communities that, uh, have adopted, uh, building codes have also made a requirement that you have essentially a tornado shelter built into the residential house. We do, we're not wanting to recommend that at this time, but we believe it's a subject that we would bring back to the commission that at some point in the future, if we had more information, or if the commission wanted to revisit that. And certainly, if you want to build one at home, uh, you're welcome to, and.
The new code would tell you how to do that.
Okay.
But it just doesn't require you to do that.
Right, that's a good, good way to describe it.
Some of them, could, let's say you build a house on a slab, no basement, could it just be a reinforced room in the center?
Yes.
Yeah, it could be a closet, yeah, reinforced closet, doesn't have to be, like the old It doesn't have to be like the old nuclear bomb shelters in the 50s.
It doesn't have to be recessed. And the code actually addresses, if you want to build one detached from the structure, you can do that as well.
Sure.
And it gets to the point where it tells you, you can only be this far from the house. But again, they're not required, but there are guidelines to help you build one that kind of meets the standards.
Okay.
And the other one that's odd is this energy efficiency section. I think in the 70s, they think that we kind of created requirements, you got to have R of this in the roof and/or that in the walls. And that's kind of what our building codes are today. And the new building code takes it substantially further than that, but it gets very complicated. And most of the communities in our area have said, that's too complicated. It's in everybody's that's building and buying houses, best interest to have a lot of insulation or appropriate amount, and have simplified that. And staff is proposing that we basically simplify it to what we have now, which is a basic requirement that kind of evolved out of the 70s energy crisis, I think, and leave it that way rather than adopt the...
At least initially. I think we could beef it up some, but I don't want to go to the extremes of what this code outlines right now.
This is on insulation?
Yes.
And what's your recommendation? Leave it like it is, but what does that mean?
Well, at this point, we would just assign simple R values to walls and ceilings, and, you know, separations between finished and unfinished spaces. I think in time when we, you know, have a better understanding of it, we can come back. Because this new code gets specific, it tells you, you have to, I think we talked about, you have to have a programmable thermostat. You have to use LED lighting. You have to, you know, I think that's getting a little too intrusive. So we would like to study some of those and maybe beef it up in time, but not to the full extent.
And that's typically what we've seen in some of the surrounding communities.
What are the requirements now for ceiling and walls? R13, R30?
For the most part, yes, sir. I do not have those tables memorized.
But I mean, that's right. And I know there's so many specifics, but generally it's like that.
And I can tell you that this 2018 code takes ceilings up to like an R49.
Wow.
Yeah. That's a significant jump.
Well, we'd like you to do that by the next meeting.
Correct, yeah.
Have them memorize.
I will get to work on that.
So right now, if someone's building a new house, you'd make a recommendation, you know, they may ask you some questions if it's not the builder and say, what do you think on insulation? But it's completely their decision. If they want to do R7 and R11, that's fine with them. You just tell them your utility bill's going to go up.
Right.
But there's no, I mean, they could do it, they could, I don't want to say dumb it down to that, but they could...
Yeah, but, you know, we don't see that.
Yeah, okay. But that's still the builders and the builder's choice, but for the most part, it doesn't. But while this, if you did implement it, would no longer be a choice, it would have to be...
Right.
Okay.
I mean, this new code, as it's currently written, takes it third-party testing into consideration, which is, we know nothing about that. We don't know what expense it would be to the builders.
So as we go along and learn, we may, you may come back and, you know, ask for an adjustment or something like that. So I think that's a good approach, iterative.
On page, the next page, I believe it's page three of our policy report, is related to the existing building code, which is for commercial buildings, and cross out the word residential there. This is commercial buildings. The, this is a code that we have used in the past, and it really addresses changes to existing buildings. And the goal is to protect public safety of residents, particularly if there's, if it's commercial space or residential space, make sure that whatever we're doing, it keeps people safe for now and into the future. There, this is the part that kind of gets into, what do you do with the second and third floor of your old building in downtown Leavenworth? And one of the things that we found is, we've done more and more of these. I used to do some upstairs every few years. Now we tend to see, you know, one a year or so. What do you, how do you classify the space? Where does it start? Where does it stop? We've even gone so far as to have discussions, was it ever used as apartments? Well, it probably was. And they were little teeny things, and the bathroom was down the hall, and I can prove to you it was used as apartments. That has absolutely no resemblance to the apartments that you're going to build today, but the use is still residential, and it created some interesting discussions. And we've worked, I believe, amicably through all of the discussions. But if we were to put into our building code that all space in existing commercial buildings that has not been used as residential space for 24 months, two years, that we would start the discussion by calling it low-hazard storage space, rather than it was an apartment in the 50s or something of that nature. And that way, everybody kind of knows where you're starting. And there's a whole process you can go through of, do you have sprinklers or do you have fire-rated walls? Oftentimes, we start out talking with owners or developers about what they want to do and what we think they will end up doing. And six months down later, down the road, more often than not, they're doing what we suggested they would find appropriate as a remedy for the situation to make the second or even the third floors of some of these buildings safe typically for apartments.
Okay.
And so that is that paragraph. There's, every one of these is unique to some extent, but at least we know where to start the conversation if we do that. Anything else on?
No, no, like I said, the existing building code is, it covers so many different topics and so many different occupancies. And three basic different methods for architects or owners to approach to make their changes to the building, whichever one works best for them. But it still defines, you know, if you use design route B, then you have to stick with that one design or design method from beginning to end. And ultimately, they all bring you back to pretty much the same thing with a few variances. So it does give them options.
And we've been quite satisfied with the projects that have occurred in downtown Leavenworth in the last 15 years.
I do want to stress again, we have never formally adopted this code. We have used it as reference. This is the first time we are officially adopting it because it's just becoming so much more commonly used in the construction industry.
Makes sense.
The, some other interesting things, you would assume that something as basic and has been around so long as electricity would not have anything exciting happening in their codes. But there are some things that have evolved over time. They, I say, I call them significant minor changes because there's no real major change. The basic layout of what electricity needs to be in the house is the same, but we find that over time, we add more receptacles that I thought we would remodel the part of our house and add receptacles that has USB plugs built into them because that's what we use for everything. That was a great plan. We still haven't used one for anything. So there's lots of things that are evolving, but the basic layout is the same. Where you start running into kind of new technology is an expanded requirement for ground fault circuit breaker interruption. That is, what's the classic, you dropped your hairdryer in the bathtub or something while you're drying your hair, it will flip the breaker so you don't electrocute yourself. Those systems have been in place for decades, very reliable. There's been a push to expand that into lots of other things that have motors in the home. We are not completely confident that it's a good idea for things that, like the sump pumps or the freezer in the basement sort of thing, that it might have some transient thing happen to it that causes the breaker to shut off. And you may not know it until you're, your freezer's really bad shape.
Right.
So our recommendation, and I believe the Building Board of Appeals' recommendation, was exclude many of these specific circumstances, sump pumps, refrigerators, freezers, and from the requirement for ground fault circuit breaker interruptions.
As it currently is. We're not, we're not, we're just staying on the same path that we currently are.
Status quo.
Yeah. I do want to jump in. I think I told you last time, what they tell us nowadays is refrigerators, freezers, a lot of these appliances, where in the past, they had a history of causing what we would consider a nuisance trip on ground faults. They say the equipment has been designed and improved, and it doesn't cause that anymore. But again, just because you have a new home doesn't mean you have a new refrigerator or a new freezer. So we think we need to give folks a little more time to, for everything in the industry to catch up.
And a similar concept is what they call arc fault circuit interrupter protection. And this is more directly related to short circuits in devices. Or, and Cal's a better explainer of this than I am, that basically, it's not something if you plug into your wall and you unplug something, you might see a spark or an arc. This is, this stuff has little microcircuits in the circuit breakers and says, that's not what I'm looking for. What it's looking for is the, something falls up over in the attic and lays across your ancient wiring in your attic and shorts out two wires. It'll go, that's a, that's a short circuit, and I'm turning myself off. Now, a regular circuit breaker will do that too. This takes care of...
Regular circuit breaker will trip due to heat caused by an overload in the system, and arc fault trips because it's sensing something in this circuit is not, as Mike said, acting as it normally should. There's, you know, they're seeing spikes in...
And you're saying that type of protection, the arc fault circuit interrupter protection would be required on new construction?
New construction and any major...
Or where new services are being installed or on existing...
Yeah, we do not, we do not suggest doing it on new services. The board did not feel that, they recommend it to folks, especially folks who have older homes, knob and tube wiring. A lot of the electricians think it's a great idea, but they also tell me that it's an added safety feature, but you have to be careful in knob and tube because there are, sometimes in the older systems, they will get more nuisance trips on the arc fault, which end up taking the electrician more time to find that source. In the end run, you know, you're better off if you find it, but we're not going to require it on service changeouts. But if you add a room addition to your home, those circuits in that room addition will have arc fault protection. We won't make the entire house have arc fault protection. Or if you, you know, if you...
That's fine.
Gut the house and rewire the inside, at that point, we would.
And does the code speak to that specificity? Because, I mean, the way you explained it, you know, makes sense.
It does in the appendix of the, in the International Residential Code, we have an appendix, it's called the Existing Building Code.
All right.
And it addresses those as well, similar to the Existing Building Code for commercial. It gives you levels of renovations, and the requirements step up as the scope of the project steps up.
Okay. And then what was, tamper-resistant receptacles? Is that, what's the deal with that?
We discussed it last night. Those are the receptacles. You've seen them occasionally where it looks like there, it's a built-in, what I call baby cap.
Okay, right, right.
It requires that both prongs make contact at the same time for it to accept the device. I will again tell you that the two board members that showed up for the board meeting were not quite sold on these, but I did bring it to commission last time and tell them, I know it may be a nuisance, but I'm really uncomfortable not doing something that's safety-related.
Sure.
Because I...
And the cost was like a dollar per unit approximately.
Yes. It's like everything else. I think the cost will go down as it becomes a more common product.
It's a minimal cost now. It's not, it wasn't a big cost.
So new construction and major renovation of existing?
Yes. We already require, it's already a requirement on commercial properties, even commercial residential properties right now.
Okay.
Because it's part of the NEC, which covers those. But this would be part of the residential code, which would now affect single-family and duplexes.
Okay. For new construction, and then if there's a...
Yes, and major renovations, yes. But if you're, I'm, staff does not go out every time a homeowner changes a receptacle. And even if we did, there's one receptacle they're replacing their house, we're not going to tell them, you have to go get a tamper-resistant receptacle just to replace this one.
Okay.
All right, page four. Those significant changes to the fuel, gas, and mechanical codes. There are a couple of interesting changes to the plumbing code. The, one of these has to do with what they call saddle fittings, which are typically used to power humidifier or sometimes an ice maker. And it's where you have a little clamp you can buy at the hardware store, it's got a sharp pointy on it, and you put it around the pipe and you screw it in, and the point pokes a hole in the water line, and then you back the screw out, and then the water flows into the ice maker, or whatever it may be. If you go into some of these older houses, you'll see where they failed over time. There's like four of them in a row. They just go buy another one, put it next to the first one. I've got a house like that. But it's a disaster waiting to happen ultimately, and this would just remove that from, basically, as being an approved device for that. You're not exposing anybody to any great danger, but leaks in the basement are oftentimes undetected for a long time. The, another one was, basically, the plumbers are installing water heaters and things like that, including pressure-reducing valves that we have not required for a while. But all of the warranties for the equipment require pressure-reducing valves, and they've learned the hard way that if you don't have a pressure-reducing valve and what dishwasher or something fails, then you're kind of sitting out there. So we agreed that we should probably be enforcing that section of the code where we have not before.
Saddle-type fittings are no longer allowed?
Right. And that's, those are two separate issues, but you can, there are somewhat more expensive, but much more desirable ways to connect an ice maker to the device.
As I mentioned, staff, again, staff is not going to require when a mechanical contractor goes out and installs a new furnace and the property owner wants the humidifier. We're not going to require that the mechanical contractor bring in a plumbing contractor to put in a valve. We have enough faith in these craftsmen, in the trades that they serve in, that a mechanical contractor can install the proper valve while they're there.
Okay. Swimming pools, this is another one that we...
This is one that we've never had before again, but International Code Council just broke it out. It used to be covered underneath the building code, but now they say, here's a new document, covers commercial and residential pools, it covers above-ground, in-ground. I mean, it talks if the, if you can have above-ground pool, that if you have the right ladder, there's no barrier required. But in other cases, you know, one of the big keys of this is the barriers for the residential pools. Because, let's be honest, we don't see many new swimming, commercial, or public swimming pools built.
Right, right.
So that's fairly straightforward. It's stuff we've been doing. It's got a separate book now.
Now, and so for new pools or spas, definitely would include installation of equipment and safeguards such as barriers and fences?
We do our best.
What about for existing?
We have never, it's never been our department's policy to go back on existing. But we always, if we ever have an opportunity to speak to property owners or tenants who put up, have a pool in place, we do inform them that it is the requirement nowadays, and they might also want to check with their insurance company.
Insurance company, you have to tell them before you...
A lot of times, if a home has been owner-occupied for some time and the family moves out of town, they had the pool the way they liked it. Now they're going to rent the house out, and the renter will say, I don't see a fence around the pool as one required. We'll get those calls and let them work it out.
Good discussion on that, okay.
I think the commission would agree with me that we appreciate all of the work that the Boards of Appeals do with you guys to look at this stuff in great detail to save us a lot of, a lot of time here. And we do appreciate their volunteer time in working with us, with you guys.
Staff does it well, I'll tell you. Because, you know, I can, I was an electrician previously, but I'm not in the trade anymore. So, you know, I've been paid for the last 20-some years to look at it from an inspector's side. It's nice to hear from the guys still working out there every day, you know, get their perspective on issues.
That's good. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Mr. McDonald, is there anything else?
Yeah, I want to talk briefly a little bit about implementation. We tried to explain as we went through here this evening that if you put on a new faucet washer, you don't have to replace your roof, or that kind of, that kind of stuff, that our staff and the building codes are set up to have a reasonable approach to solving problems. I would say most of the very interesting discussions we have relate to if someone's changing the use of something, or if it's a historic building, and that's a whole different discussion about how we, how we work on projects. discussion about how we, how we work on projects on historic buildings, because there are some variances that they're allowed to take depending on circumstances. But changing uses always will have, probably a third of the conversations we had here this evening, we'll have those conversations with the owners or prospective contractors or what have you, to try to make them aware that these are issues. We don't, we don't try to find ways to bring, like I said, if you replace your faucet washer, you don't have to replace your old roof. That's not, that's not the rule. And our staff works really hard to find ways to explain to people what we do and why, and to find a way to make it work that makes sense.
Sounds good.
And if you, as commissioners, hear something that causes you concern, please contact city manager or our office as appropriate, and we'll take a look at it.
Do any of my fellow commissioners have any other questions or comments on this particular agenda item?
No.
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, let me think. So we're comfortable that we can move forward with what we've discussed tonight, and then it would come back for approval at some point, right?
Yeah, then work now, really, a lot turns to Carla, putting the ordinances together to adopt the new codes in Public Works. I think we have good guidance from Public Works. Property maintenance, I didn't see any reason that we needed to bring that back from the initial discussion, and we just have a little bit of work to do on the fire code, but we'll can, we'll start on the implementation process now that I think we have clear direction.
Can I just add one? I, I think it's very critical that fire and building codes go at the same time.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Because they are so intertwined.
Yeah.
Property maintenance code is kind of a standalone.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Makes sense.
And I have, I have my ordinances kind of prepared for Carla to review, and I will go ahead and forward them to her, and she can start on ours, but I do not want to go forward with the building code until fire code's ready.
So we thinking another month or two? I'm not trying to tie you down or anything, but...
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Probably even a month or two.
And we'll, we'll turn fire around as quick as we can, get the information the commission wanted, and I would expect to see that in probably two weeks.
All right, that's good. Any other questions or comments for Mr. McDonald or...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. So that takes us through the last topic for today's study session, so I am going to start around the horn, first start with the city manager to see whether he's got any, anything. Commissioner Wilson?
It's great to be back.
After what, three weeks, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Lee Hardin?
No, just a comment. I wanted to comment on the downtown wayfinding signs. Really, really like them.
Look nice, yeah.
Yeah, looked very nice.
Very nice, absolutely. Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner Price, you're here?
Miss, I think, well, with the fire department here and just with the community, you know, recent loss of a firefighter just down the road in West Raymore, or is it volunteer firefighter Chuck McCormick? Just, you know, citizens realize the dangers that our firefighters, all firefighters encounter on a daily basis. Fire, firefighters went out on, there's no such thing as a routine call, but I'll call it a routine call for a fire, probably started in lint, in the lint vent on a dryer, and obviously we lost a firefighter. But just keep all your firefighters, your police departments in mind, you know, what they experience every day. There's no routine call, and very sad for the family of this firefighter, as well as the volunteer fire department down in West Raymore, which is in, what, Lee's Summit area, in my, is that correct, you?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I know Commissioner Bowder's gonna talk about this, but I had quick talks or discussions with people in Wagga Wagga, but I think Commissioner Bowder has a complete report here that she'd like to give us about the fires in Australia. Commissioner Bowder?
I sent a note to the mayor of Wagga Wagga's wife to find out how things were going. Wagga Wagga is in New South Wales, which is where most of the fire is. It's in Victoria as well, all in the southern part of Australia. Starting in Sydney, where Wagga Wagga is, is like halfway between Sydney and Melbourne, and it's on that southern tip, so the fire is going toward that. Anyway, she said, so lovely to hear from you and for your concern. The fires have certainly been close to us, but we are safe. The outlying community have not been so lucky, and Greg, that's her husband, the mayor, Greg Conkey, has been at the forefront of the evacuation center in Wagga, housing over 11,000 people impacted by multiple fires. The crisis is still not over, as several fires from, fires from New South Wales and Victoria have merged into a huge fire front. Many homes and animals have been lost, unfortunately, some lives. People are not as yet allowed home to inspect damage to their properties. The ferocity of the fires has been indescribable mainly because of the long-running drought rendering scrub as volatile combustible, combustible fire fuel. Wagga residents have been incredibly generous, setting up free supermarket with donated produce, clothes, and toiletries, accommodation, and pet refuge centers. The various aid agencies are offering pastoral care and mental health support. Many residents have accepted whole families into their homes for as long as it takes. It is truly humbling to witness the amazing strength and the best of humanity, which is at the front of this tragedy. The loss of wildfire and vegetation is unfathomable and will probably never be replaced. What you see on the news is true, Australia is burning. Love to you all and thanks for compassion. Jenny Conkey. The thing about, it was interesting about Australia is, when we went there and we studied the Aboriginal, Aboriginal culture, they've had droughts and fires, you know, for centuries and centuries, but they, they showed us how they burnt around their structures, in circles around their structures, to prevent things like this. But now with all the new development and the new cities and everything, that, not new, but they've come up over the last couple hundred years, something like this is truly devastating because there is a lot of brush outside of the cities. So, anyway, keep them in your prayers. Lions Club International, Rotary International, United Way Worldwide, they all have funds set up for this, so if anybody wants to give, they can give through those organizations.
That's good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Bowder. What I want to share very quickly with my fellow commissioners is that, you know, I've been the mayor for about a month, and I've given some thought to strategic communication and outreach with the community, and what I've decided to do is write a guest column on a monthly basis for the Leavenworth Times, which would be published in, on their website and also in the, in the print hard copy of the newspaper. And I, I've done that, the first one's gonna be published on Thursday, and it's just focused on the things that we've identified as our priorities with respect to goals and objectives, and the things that we've been dealing with the last six or seven months in terms of actions. So I don't believe there's anything controversial in there, but I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have, no, no, no. I wrote it, I got some...
I know, I know. They'll call Paul.
I'm confident that it's good, but I'll have Paul send out to you tomorrow, so you get it ahead of time, so you can read it. But really, as I do this, I'd like input, and you can give me feedback, the good, bad, and the ugly. I don't think there'll be too much ugly or bad, but, so, I'm just giving you a heads-up on that.